All right, well, by the clock on the wall, we're going to go ahead and call this regular city council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If we can all stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the board, please? Lanyon?
President.
Pratt?
Here.
Jenkins? Van Ooster?
Here.
Reins?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
I am looking for a motion to excuse Councilman Jenkins' absence this evening. He did inform the city manager and I that he would not be here this evening.
Make a motion to excuse Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now I'm looking for an approval of this evening's agenda unless there's changes that need to be made.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. If there's anybody that would like to come forward at this time. This would be non-agenda items as well. All right, we'll keep moving right along then. Council meeting minutes of March 13th, 2023. I'm looking for a motion to approve those unless there are changes that need to be made.
Would you approve?
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that motion was forward as well. And now we have a council panel. Brandon, you had an opportunity to review.
I did. I had one question that I talked to John about. It was just a clerical issue about a check that was cut, but then everything was good. So I would make a motion to approve checks 76558 through 76621, EFT 405, and ACH 406 through 407 for a grand total of $202,446.59.
Thank you so much, Brandon. Does anyone have any questions regarding the council panel this evening? If not, I'm looking for a motion to move that forward. You may move second. Sorry, support. All right, thank you. Holly, will you call the board, please? Van Ooster?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right, well, we ran through that fast, but unfortunately we... Can I call the public hearing to order early? No, we gotta, we gotta dance around for three more minutes.
You can actually go.
Yes, we can jump ahead.
Well, can I make a point of order?
Yes.
I think that there might be some folks here that are here to speak on public comment. And if they're speaking on agenda items, we're already past the public comment section, so you might want to cycle back to that if that's okay.
Sure, sure. I will go ahead and entertain anyone that would be here to speak on public comment, but non-agenda items. Okay, Holly?
I mean, public comment for agenda.
Oh, for...
Yeah.
Really? Doesn't it have to be during the actual action items? No? All right, okay.
No, because the only public hearing we had is for the TIPA.
Okay. Well, we have two minutes according to the wall clock. Is there anybody that would like to come forward to speak on agenda items? You can state your name and your address, please.
Yes, I'm Renee Leoni, and I'm sole member of 114 N Putnam W here in Williamson, North Putnam. And we had their request, the text amendment request, and I'm here for any questions anybody might have. And if I can be of help in any way, let me know. I really appreciate thoughtful consideration of this request.
All right, thank you so much. Well, that puts us right back on track then. So I would like to go ahead and call to order the public hearing of TIPA 2B plan amendment at 7:05.
Somebody could take you to the chair. So this is the amendment for TIPA 2B. What this plan amendment will allow us to do is continue to move forward with Cold Storage Development LLC, which is the entity that's interested in purchasing the Ice House and that property. It's very, these things are very, they're very technical in nature. They have to be very precise, so the language is quite long. But the upshot of it is it does allow for the TIPA to enter into a purchase agreement. It does modify the purchase price. I mean, there's a lot of discussion about that for the past year, year and a half or so. The original purchase price was $65,000, and that was somewhat of a barrier to have the project redeveloped. And just to give you an idea of the scope, once this thing is fully, if things march forward, they secure a site plan, and they have a building there, the tax revenue on a year-to-year basis for all taxing entities is about $20,000 and change. So there's a quick payback for the community over the last few years. So happy to answer any questions you may have, but it's really just the technical language to amend the TIPA agreement. And that's the other thing, too, is anytime there's activity in the TIPA, because it has to be very precise, these amendments are necessary. And you can see, I'm not going to read them all, but there's a number of amendments over the past few years.
Right.
So that's all I have.
Great, thank you, John. I appreciate it. Is anyone else here for the public hearing for TIPA 2B plan amendment? All right. I'm looking for a motion to take us out of our public hearing. No, I don't need that. All right, we're out of our public hearing then, back on track with our action items. Our first action item is the Michigan Department of Transportation MDOT contract 23-5061 for the North Putnam Street project. And it looks like Scott, I'll go ahead and turn that over to you.
Sure. This is the next step in our very large project that are coming up north of town. And we've completed the design phase. The project is going to MDOT for bid letting April 7th. And MDOT has provided the city with the contract. This is the contract between the city and MDOT. MDOT administers the contract with the contractor. So we have to be in contract with MDOT tied to it as a second party. So we've done this before many different times on the same types of road projects with MDOT. It's basically, this is the standard contract, so.
All right.
If you have any questions?
Yes, council. Any members have questions for Scott regarding this? Okay, that was easy. All right, I'm looking for a motion to move this forward.
Make a motion to approve resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Michigan Department of Transportation contract number 23-5061, associated project authorizations with MDOT.
Thank you, Terry. Do I have support?
Seven.
Thank you, Brandon. Holly, will you call the board, please? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Van Ooster?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to our next agenda item, it's the resolution to adopt the TIPA plan amendment. John?
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So this is the resolution for the, which we held the public hearing for. Again, it's pretty long, but what we're asking council for tonight is to adopt the 2023 amendment to the tax increment financing plan and development plan to be, and there's a number of whereas instead. So happy to answer any questions that you may have, or something that I might have covered in the preamble.
All right, thank you so much. Questions, yes?
Yeah, so the agreement dealt with four, there were four things they had to do. The first three dealt with, dealt with the new building that's going to be on the premises. Then four was this, was us approving this. So my question is, in terms of the fate of the Ice House itself, I understand that their intent is to keep the Ice House and restore it. But it's not protected in language, so I'm curious how you feel about that.
How do I feel about it? Usually ask what my feels. I appreciate that. So again, this is another one of the long discussion points about, you know, the best and most assured way to preserve that building, which is never a certainty when you're dealing with historical properties. But I know that the development team's been meeting in good faith with us to this point. They look at that Ice House as the signature feature for their future brand. And without the, and I'll say it, without the quote-unquote pressure to immediately, you know, generate enough profit to deal with the complexities of that structure, they're confident they'll be able to march their time and go through the phases of stabilizing it and then ultimately opening it up. Their preliminary plans are for more of a event-type center. They're not sure they would ever use it as a day-to-day operating facility. But the good news about this development team, they are, they are community members. Couple of them live, actually live in town, so I think they feel the same sense of urgency maybe that some of us all do now with that property. So there's nothing guaranteed, and frankly, that might have been a deal breaker for this deal. And having dealt with historical properties, that can be a deal breaker if there's some level of constraint that you put on the property, so.
So is there a chance that you would get this property back if their situation doesn't work out?
If, if they do not secure, that's part of the resolution, if they don't secure a site plan. One thing we did change this time around is we added some milestones. And one of the milestones is securing a site plan by May 10th of this year. So real soon, in a month. And then the other one is substantial progress on construction. And if they don't meet any of those milestones, there's a remit.
But that's for the new building, correct?
That's for the whole property. If they don't make, if they don't march through those steps, then we would get the property back.
Okay.
One thing I think I want to add, too, is that there are entities out there that can help them with historical preservation. And so John and I actually met with a member from MADC and a member from LEAK last Friday. And we're going to put Cold Storage in contact with both of those entities to help them navigate some of that and see where they could seek some funding that could help. Because that building does have such a rich history. I think that it would be advantageous for them to look at every single avenue if they want to, you know, continue on with that project to see if they can seek some funding. Because I think they would qualify for it. Did I have a hand down here, Terry?
As the new guy, I'm looking at the $64,000 number, and I'm wondering, did TIPA purchase that property at one point in the past? But where'd the $64,000 number come from?
I'm not exactly sure. Mr. Lanyon was on the TIPA board for a while. I know that the city and the, well, the TIPA acquired that property more than 20 years ago.
Yep.
So.
And would that be fair to say, Brandon, that that was probably a fair market price and that TIPA attorney probably came forward with?
Yeah, we had long discussed on TIPA whether it was going to just be a, you know, $1 giveaway to them for development. We said no, we wanted some skin in the game, and so then that's where, you know, we had come up with a valuation. Corey worked hard with the TIPA attorney to figure out what that valuation would be. But John is also correct in that, you know, long discussions that have been had with the developer is that, you know, like most developments, you know, you turn around and there's something else that needs to get done, which is why the turning of the Ice House into the distillery then became a secondary, we're going to use it as an icon. So, you know, I get where this is all coming from, and I'd be fine with it.
Okay, so it's not like we have sunk its city, have sunk $64,000 into this, and we're looking to do it. Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious.
All right. Any other question or discussion? I'm looking for somebody to make the motion for this.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 amendment to the tax increment financing plan and development plan 2B.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, Holly, will you call the board, please? Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Van Ooster?
Yeah.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, now our next agenda item is the second reading of ordinance to amend the City of Williamson zoning ordinance to revise Articles 2, 6, and 12 as to the residential uses in the C1 district. I'm going to turn this over to John just for a recap, and then I'll ask for questions or discussion.
Thank you, members of council, Mayor Gilroy. So this is the second reading to amend the zoning ordinance, the articles that the mayor referenced. The first reading was the last council meeting, and prior to that, the planning commission did send this up to council for their review. So what this would allow is ground floor residential on North Putnam Street, basically the block from Grand River to High Street. That's it in a nutshell. This is, like I said, the second reading.
So I will, does anyone have any questions or comments or discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yes, Stan.
I know one of the things I've had different retailers in town that are in the downtown district discuss with me since I've been on council is ways, expressing frustration to me about the amount of non-retail that's taken up in our downtown area and ways that we could encourage that. And I always said that there's not a lot we as council can do to have a property owner tell property owner what businesses they can allow to rent out or own their spaces. And, you know, I always said I kind of heard their frustration, but there's not, we're not going to pass an ordinance that states you can't have real estate or insurance sales or whatever in our downtown area. With that being said, I hear that frustration, and I see this zoning change as something that does. I know it's narrow in scope, but it does take that emphasis off of retail in that downtown area.
So I'm going to, I'm going to chime in because I attended the planning commission meeting where this was requested and then forwarded up to council. And indulge me because this is going to probably not sit well. But I have a, I have a difficult problem with the fact that this project has gone on for four and a half years, and this is now being brought to us. And I feel that your architect or your construction company did you a disservice by not finding this out early in the game so that this potential cost could be baked into what you have already put forward. I loved the idea of the retail and the residential when you brought it back in 19, I believe it was before COVID. And so you've gone through a lot of birthing pains with that building, and I am sympathetic to that. I don't feel that this is the best use for our downtown district to have residential on the first floor. And just as Dan said, this is small scope. But for the amount of time that I've been here in council, we have, we have faced situations where we have a round peg that will not fit to a square pole, and so we change language in order to fix that problem. And I don't feel that that's the best idea moving forward. We need to be more proactive and not reactive. And while I know that we may sit here this evening and say this isn't going to set a precedence for other first-floor residential in our downtown district, I have a feeling that it could. We have a lot of residential dwellings in our downtown district, but those are second floor and third floor. And so I, I just have, I have some reservations about this. And while I know it might not be ideal, I, I just don't see how that this is the best use of that property. And that's my opinion only. So those are, those are my thoughts and feelings on that. Anyone else? Discussion items or questions?
Yeah, I guess I'm going to speak.
Yep.
But so I guess I will disagree in that I, I agree that I'm sick of it sitting there for four years. But we're now going to, no, we're not now doing it. But the discussion then is that we're not going to make the change, and then this building is just going to sit there for longer. Because it will, it will. And I also am curious, the argument that we don't have enough business space in downtown. The entire first level is business space.
What I, the thing that I get from specifically retail shops, one, because when I, when I first came on council out, I did a tour, and I talked to a lot of people, and they're like, hey, we've got a lot of non-retail downtown. What can you do to help us? And I go, there's not a lot I can do. I'm like, we're not going to pass a city ordinance to tell them you can't, you can't have five insurance sales down here or whatever. And I said that, had that conversation with a lot of different business owners. And now I feel like, and I understand it's narrow in scope, but it's not one building either. It's not, we're not, this isn't tailored to only, I think there's possibly three other buildings in that small corridor that if they chose to could make the same change. And I am sympathetic to retailers saying, hey, it's hard for us to get walking traffic when a lot of our downtown area where these first-floor businesses are non-retail. And then we're going to go, okay, we're going, we're now going to allow first-floor residential in what's supposed to be our commercial business.
I mean, sure, if you were talking about on the main strip, right? But we're talking about a back corner where it's not on the main strip. Down the street, a slight amount, we have a house, we have an apartment complex. We also have building, residential up top, so I mean, like, we're still talking the same general area.
Wouldn't, wouldn't this, the, not that, I'm going to use the business name because wouldn't, according to this zoning, wouldn't Aurora's Closet, if they decided to qualify, they're, they're on Grand River, but they have an exit on the Putnam.
If they're front, yeah, I don't know what the legal apartment is.
I believe the, I believe the, across Putnam, I believe the cigar shop that's, or the place that has the, they, they would also do that. That's the main corner right there that, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but we're also not changing the zoning for one building. This would affect that, allow that in that entire corner.
Can I add something?
Yep.
So my biggest concern, I think I expressed it last month, if there was any building in our downtown district that we would even consider maybe adding first-floor residential, it would be that one. I think it's in our least business-heavy area of our downtown four corners. It doesn't really necessarily bother me that that building becomes first-floor residential. But the concern I expressed last month, and I'll reiterate today, is that, like Dan said, we've opened up that avenue for that whole corner down there where some of those other businesses could be transformed into the same. And my bigger concern than that is if somebody comes at some point and purchases a spot, say, on South Putnam, how do we then tell them no when we have said yes before? You know, and before we know it, we've got this.
And I'll call on, I'll call on the public here real quick. And I think that's, that's a good case because I thought about South Putnam. What if David Jones passes away? And that's a perfect example of a first-story, second-story residential. Tina Gray's business, first-story, second-story residential.
My business.
Yes.
To 18 South Putnam.
Yes.
It's mixed use.
So I think.
And you're telling me in your ordinance that I cannot have an apartment.
And I'll call in, call in the rest of, in just a moment. But I, I think that we are setting precedence, even though this is a particular area. It does give way to those next, you know, people that want, would like to come forward and, and ask to have it changed for them as well. Any other questions or comments from the, from the board? Yes, Terry?
I think it's a nicely designed building. I've been, actually, I was on the planning commission when you first came here. That's how long this thing has been in action. So I think it's a nicely designed building, and I think it doesn't, doesn't necessarily, I don't think it detracts from the downtown. And I'm ready to see it completed as residential, so for what it's worth.
Dan?
Having brought up South Putnam, and I know this doesn't encompass South Putnam in this, but I also serve on our CBA. And one of the things that is brought up when someone asks for a variance is would this do justice, would it be an injustice to the neighbors? So I'm, I'm thinking this is a reference on the CBA. If somebody on South Putnam comes to me and says, I want to do residential, I need a variance, and three doors down and across the street, they were allowing first-floor residential, I go, where do, where do I go with that? And I, that, with that on.
Okay, well, can I take comments from the gallery? Yes, all right. Please come forward, state your name and address.
William Lung, 138 East Grand River Avenue. As long as you guys know, I'm one of the residents that, in commercial businesses that Dan actually is, as mentioned. I want to see more from the town, and it is, the insurance companies, but everything else. There's actually not enough places to rent right now. My phone rings probably at least once or twice a month asking what's available here. That being said, that little shop is, I see it being residential, but it's going to open up a bunch of problems because Aurora's Closet is already half-resident. They're going to, they're going to see that opportunity, they're going to make that bottom floor, I guarantee it. Because they, they already brand, I mean, how many units they have up above. It's going to affect the town's walkability. All of our events are in the park. You know, you've got the farmer's market, so people are going to walk, it's awkward, it's an awkward spot. So walking by, you're going to be walking by, you have open windows unless you're changing some of the features on the building. But to me, that's, that's kind of really, kind of weird to walk by residential in that area. Smoke shop, I can see them turning their, their half into residential. A lot of people probably don't know, but at 137 West, they have residential behind Posey &amp; Joy. And that's, I'm back to Matt Alley a lot. They open up, they grill out, it's, that's, that's kind of, I mean, it was stopping this, these people to have, if there is people moving in there to have cookouts, having friends over. Not to mention, only one or two people can really comfortably live in there, maybe, maybe, maybe three, a small family. But that's not going to help businesses like mine. That's, that's very, very low. If anything, we need more residential zone where they're actually supposed to be at in that downtown. I feel like we're kind of really moving on that pathway and making this town really awesome to, for shops. That's a perfect location for a candy shop, even a lawyer on top. I mean, I see more commercial, commercial. I don't know what, like money-wise, if they can make more off of the residential. But I, I can see, people are looking. I mean, people want spaces to, to brand for commercial. Yeah, that's about it, but very, I, I hope, you know, I, again, I, that is the one building that is probably the best fit for residential, but you're affecting two other businesses and opening up a can of worms. Like, most of these restaurants could have residential on the back of there. I mean, there's tons of things you do. What if we allow this, and then all of a sudden, that whole strip behind the, the new pathway we just built, all becomes residential? What if my shop, the Hive, what if I cut that in half? Oh, now I'm going to have somebody to look back there. So I think this is a slippery slope, so.
State your name and address, please.
Donmarie Joseph, 2833 Len Road in Williamson here. And we don't live in the city, but we have plenty of properties in the city. And I really hadn't read the ordinance until today. And when I look at the ordinance, Article, Section 4 says, "For mixed-use dwelling, no residential dwelling. Unit may be located on the first floor of a building of any lot that has front of Grand River or South Putnam." We own the building at 218 South Putnam. That is an old house. And we have everything on the first floor. I run my business out of there. We have a kitchen, we have two bathrooms. It's a, it's, it was a house that was turned in, so we use it. So now is this ordinance going to tell me that I cannot rent that out if someday, someday in the future, I retire? You know? That, and also I have other rentals here in downtown. I don't have a parking spot for my other rentals. Just saying, you know, it sort of is opening up a can of worms, I believe, for one building. And it's not taken into consideration, maybe, all the rest of us that do have buildings, pay taxes, and have been there for a long time. I think EBV's been there since 2006. You know, along with the other buildings that we own. So if you want to give me a parking spot, and if you're going to tell me that I can't have that as residential, then maybe it could change things for me, too. You know, and we've kept the property up and really enjoy being there. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I definitely hear the comments and the feelings that people have. That's in one reason why I worked and tried to work so hard with Livingston County and Raphael Kason with McKenna, and explored so many options, that as many options as I could in regards to trying to make it work in the way that I had hoped it would. All the other buildings in downtown are grandfathered in. They, they can do whatever they want, and that's not the case for this building. And as for longevity, as I mentioned last, in the planning zoning, I've been here and my family have enjoyed downtown Williamson, in the City of Williamson, for 20 years. We bike in, we shop here, we, you know, go to the theaters here, we, we've been doing this for twenty years. We are not a stranger to Williamson. We, I purchased this building through one one four North Putnam LLC with the intent of giving back to the city of Williamson. I wanted to be able to, I saw this, this building that was deteriorating, that I thought was the cutest thing in the world, and wanted to do something with. And I've wanted to be able to contribute to the city, though its vibrancy, and I wanted to do it in a certain way. That way is not at all possible. So the only two options were really commercial, commercial, or residential, residential. And commercial, commercial is, is an option, but I see, you know, the, the building as it was, was open just by appointment before. There are a number of, of businesses that are open three days a week. And while I see promise here in downtown Williamson, and I wanted to contribute to that, I felt that another way that I could contribute, because as you had mentioned, the upstairs and the downstairs would be commercial. And there is a concern stated by the people that you've talked to of non-retail businesses in downtown Williamson. And I felt, well, gosh, I'd be contributing to more of that. And there is a hesitancy there. And there's, there's also an investment that, that's there that I have to, part of my brain needs to be paying attention to, because this is a huge investment. This has become a huge investment for me. And I know it's taken a long time, but we've had a pandemic. Everything has slowed down. And I recognize that my contractor and my, my architect had, could have provided me with better guidance. However, there, this was new to, they have, like, many, many years of experience, and the lack of willingness to work with me. There is a code, and I did backflips to try to make it so it would, all sorts of different plans would work to the intention of the code, if not the letter of the code, which is fire safety, of course. And nothing seemed to work. And the only options are commercial, commercial, residential, residential. And I also did the research on the trends for smaller cities. I did the trends for post-pandemic, the impact on, on, of, of the pandemic on cities, and people are moving into the cities. And I, gosh, I looked at all sorts of online reputable resources for what that, what that's looking like. But that's, that's only my research. I wanted to reach out and find out what people who do this for a living thought. So I reached out to the city manager, I reached out to McKenna, I reached out to realtors in the area, spoke with all of them, tried to get information from all of them in regards to what they felt would be the best direction for the city of Williamson, because they know the city of Williamson. And this was where all the information brought me. I wouldn't be making this if I didn't, this request, if I didn't sincerely believe that this is where all that research has taken me, and that this will contribute to the vibrancy of downtown Williamson. I sincerely believe that, and it's my hope that, that you might, too.
Thank you. Yes, Scott.
I have a comment and a question. The comment is that they may be, may be experiencing some form of reinvention, just going around our environment due to just changes over time in terms of the antiques going down and et cetera. So there may be, the downtown may be reinventing itself. That's my comment. My question is that if, if South Putnam wanted to do the same thing, and we had done, we had approved this, they want to do the same thing, and we said no, are we setting ourselves up for a lawsuit?
Not necessarily, no. This is a, this is a legislative determination as to how you want to regulate the C-one downtown district. It's, right now, it currently says no residential dwelling on the first floor with frontage on Grand River or Putnam Street. And so the referenced amendment adds South Putnam to differentiate it. But that's just, you couldn't say anything. You don't have to prohibit first-floor residential on any, any area, but, so it really goes into, what is it that the city wants? What is its plan? And North Putnam has very few commercial establishments on it, to the point where, okay, the policy for that area would be different from the policy on South Putnam, and definitely different for Grand River.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Can I, please, it's too late for me to say.
I'll, one more comment.
I know that one, one question or concern was the buildings that have frontage and an opening, an entry on North Putnam. My understanding is, is that if you have frontage on Grand River, that the lower unit isn't. So I'm not quite sure how that works, but others would know better, but that was my understanding of it. And I wasn't sure about South Putnam, but my understanding is that the corridor to sixty-nine has something to do with the reason on that. But again, I'm not entirely sure. The, the Grand River corridor needed to be preserved, and budding right up next to my, my parking spaces is a first-floor residential.
Thank you.
Traffic is, if anybody knows, there's more traffic on north-south than it is on Grand River. We have more traffic going up and down Putnam than we would ever have on Grand River.
I am looking for a motion for this action item.
There was one more comment.
Yes, sorry.
Hi, my, my name's Richard Kobe, and I'm associated with one one four North Putnam. And I guess I would just like to make the point that if, if that, if the text amendment is not allowed, and it went commercial, commercial, the most likely outcome, it's not, it's unlikely that retail would go in there necessarily, and it's, it's probably more likely that it would be, you know, another office, especially in, in the upstairs. So if you're trying to contribute to the vibrancy of Williamson, in my view, having more people in the downtown who could add to some of the population and the mass that would patronize the businesses would add to that vibrancy.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to move this forward.
Not sure what to read tonight.
Is it?
Approve second reading of the ordinance.
Yeah, approve second reading of the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, how do we call a vote, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
No.
Ben Osberg?
Yes.
Rhines?
No.
Gilroy?
No.
Lanyon?
Yes.
John?
The motion fails.
Tim?
The motion fails.
So let that be noted, that the motion fails. Moving along on our agenda, we have our kayak launch name, and our DDA did a community submission for our naming contest for the kayak landing, which is in the old car wash location. And I'll go ahead and turn this over to John.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So we did receive eighteen submissions, and we did have a very healthy, it sounds like that was, that's a negative. It was actually a very good discussion about the names that were submitted, and the DDA very carefully went through the submission, even, even talked about, you know, the, the impact of naming, the, the park after a person, and there's some, some hesitation to do that. So what they landed on was Red Cedar Bend Landing. And so that's our recommended motion tonight, is that we would name the new kayak landing the Red Cedar Bend Landing.
And one thing that was brought to us, and this was by Earl Wolf, who was a healthy part of this whole process, was that we don't call it a launch in kayak terms. In kayak, we know, if you are a kayaker, it is a landing. And we do have several different landings within the Williamson downtown area. We have the one right off of Cedar between the St. Mary's School and McCormick Park. And then the new one that was put in, and because this technically falls under a park, that is why we are here to vote on the name that was submitted.
So if it's called a landing, how do you launch or vote?
You'd have to ask a kayaker, and I'm not a kayaker.
Okay, I'll do it.
All right.
You can't launch until you've landed.
Right, right.
Well, I guess that's true. If you've launched, you've got to land eventually.
Exactly.
Hopefully.
This adds to that vibrancy of that walkability that we've talked about with our downtown area, with having the Old Mill Park boardwalk done. We have our walking paths through McCormick. We have the landing over there with a new kayak stand that one of our Eagle Scouts made. This really just kind of helps enhance that. So we're very lucky to have been funded to be able to do this landing, and so I'm looking for a motion for our naming.
Make a motion to name the new kayak landing Red Cedar Bend Landing.
Thank you, do I have support?
Sure.
Thank you all. Holly, would you call a vote, please?
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Osberg?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right, moving along, that is the conclusion of our action items. Moving along to our discussion items, we have our road diet, which has been on there. Do we have an update on that, Scott?
Yes, we communicated with MDOT to indicate that the city desires to keep the continental style in the downtown area. That's the bars instead of the stripes for pedestrians and for safety. And, and MDOTs acknowledged that. So we're finalizing plans and, I don't know, I'll save.
Great, all right, thank you so much. Moving along, of course, ones received, we did not receive any, so I'll move along to Department head reports, and we'll start with John.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. I don't have a lot. I do want to note that the, the financials through February are in the packet today. Continue to trend in the right direction as far as the financials. Mr. Mead will, you'll be seeing a lot of him as we start marching towards budget season, and that's, that's what staff's busy working on right now, is preparation of the, the budget, closing out the current fiscal year we're in, about three-quarters of the year. So we're working on budget prep. In our visiting session, we talked about some RFPs for, for different things, like website, planning consultants, and things like that. Just want to remind folks, until the budget's adopted, we wouldn't start with that process. And that we talked about most of our service providers reviewing that. So just, just to give you an idea of the timing on that, we'll certainly be working on the documents behind the scene, and we expect the council to adopt the budget that we're going to put in front of you after much healthy debate in public input, as always. So, but that's really all I have.
All right, thanks so much. Chief?
Yes, I have no police activity to report, but I just want to give you a little continuing update on staffing. We are still trying to move forward, we still have two vacancies, and anticipate another one soon. So we go one step forward and two steps back, and so, but yet I did get another application yet this afternoon, so that's kind of the environment we're in these days. And on the positive note, the sun is out, and so my goal is to get out on the bicycle yet this week, and it's getting to be that time of year, and so that is my report.
I know you love a bike, so that's good. And I'm sure everybody in the community will be so excited to see you out there, too. Thank you. Scott, you're here, DPW. Anything else you'd like to share besides road diet? You've got a lot of projects coming up.
Yeah, lots of projects coming up. Unfortunately, we reported that there was a water main mishap today that had to be taken care of out in front of the middle school, so fortunately, the middle school was not in session.
Right, spring break?
Yes.
So, excellent.
We're getting all geared up for all the big projects.
Yeah.
And William Street and Lloyd and all the work that's gotten to go for that, permits for the rail station projects for, that's the Zimmer and the mechanic street, the station, so you can remember about that in the future.
All right, excellent.
Is the pump on that well, is it right?
I'm sorry?
Is the new pump on well ten, is it?
Uh, well, ten, the pump is in and it's running, and well nine, which you approved at the last meeting, that one is being worked on right now. The pump is in, in place. They have pumped it, they're done the cleaning, pumped it off, did the videotaping today, so we're hoping to have that back in service by the end of the week.
Excellent, cool. Thank you so much. I know that we'll hear a lot from you as we move through spring and into summer, so I appreciate it, Scott. All right, this is the time now for our committee, subcommittee reports. Anyone have a meeting that they would like to share information? Terry? No? No, okay, all right, anyone? All right, moving along, audience participation one more time with a maximum of five minutes per presentation, if anybody would like to come forward. All right, council member comments, I'll start with Tom.
You know, that decision, I, I just want to say, it's one of the more difficult decisions that we've been facing since I've been on council. And of course, my heart wants to pour out anybody and say, do whatever you want with your building. I wouldn't want anybody to ever stand in the way, but that's a tough one. I feel like we're all sitting here to make the best decisions possible for the interest of the city, not necessarily our own feelings, and that's where I stand on that. Thank you for coming and presenting everything to us.
Thanks, Tom. Terry?
I was looking forward to the removal of the fences and the completion of the building, and we'll figure out what happens next.
All right, Terry. Brandon?
Nothing.
Scott?
Yeah, two comments. I'm wondering if we, if we need to address the wage for the, please help and get new people's ASAP. Just a comment.
Okay.
You can take that back.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And then the other thing is that in terms of reconsideration for the failed motion, it was three to three. I know that someone who voted no can recommend that to be reconsidered. What about a person who's not present? Can they recommend that to be reconsidered?
No.
So my recommendation to this council is that that motion should be reconsidered again by someone who voted no, so we can vote with a complete council on that because it was three to three, and I don't think it's fair to not have seven people vote on that, given the situation. Kind of.
All right, thank you. Dan?
I would echo Councilman Pratt's thoughts. You know, my, my heart goes, I'd like to let anybody do whatever they want with their property, but we, I, I'm looking at what's going on with that bowl area down there. There's been, so, so there was a lot that was weighed into that, and hopefully we can find a way to, for, for that, project to be completed.
All right, thanks. It is always tough, but what I love about our council is that we are not in lockstep. We know that it is okay to disagree because we are here to help the city move forward, be progressive, and it was a tough vote. I like what Councilman Ben Osberg had to say, so I will have that discussion with city manager offline. But it was a tough vote, and, and I'll just leave it at that.
May I make a comment?
Um, no, not at this time. We do have five more days of March, so I always like to make sure that I say that Mother Nature could change her mind, and we could get snow, so there is still no parking from two to five AM on city streets, so DPW can get done what they need to get done. It is staying lighter longer, so please just remember that we have walkers and bikers out there, be cognizant of that. Twisters is open, make sure you go get an ice cream cone. Our downtown will be busier before you know it with all of our different activities, with music in the park, our farmer's market on Sunday, and, and our other festivities throughout the next several months. So with that, I will go ahead and just say, enjoy the rest of the sunshine this evening, and we will adjourn at seven forty-six.